We'll call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Loma Linda. This is July 8, 2008. And I will ask for the roll call, please.
Councilman Ziprick?
Present.
Councilman Peterson?
Present.
Councilman Riggsby?
Here.
Mayor Brecham, Breachbrower?
Here.
Mayor Christman?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. The invocation of presidential agents by Councilman Peterson. Please stand.
Father of us all, thank you for this city and the privilege to serve, for the residents, for what it represents. Give us wisdom as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I presume there are new items to be added or deleted. And now, under Special Reports, I'm going to have a special report of my own to present tonight. And if Jarb, you can get the lights, I'd appreciate it, or somebody has that already? Oh, thank you. Special Report to the citizens of the city, and that is that last Thursday morning, I believe it was 8:31 in the morning, the city of Loma Linda closed on a purchase of the last major portion of the hills. And if you will look there on the screen, the area there in light green was approximately 587 acres that the city closed on. The purchase price was $3.8 million. If you will notice, that completes many of the trails, so that when people go from one area to the other, at all times, they will be on city-owned property. This area to the left, the darker green, was land that we bought in approximately 1995, and that was two different purchases. One purchase was 780 acres. Another purchase, this part right up here, close to Holder Crooks Park, was approximately 60 acres. And then this land down here, again, the dark green, to the south of the light green area, was approximately 237 acres that the city purchased approximately two years ago, 2006. Up here, very close to Holder Crooks Park, where we have the debris basin, or the flood control basin, part of that area is currently owned by the county. It will be turned over to the city probably in September of this year. So with all of this land, the city now owns approximately 1,675 acres in the hills. To put this in perspective, Grand Central Park in New York City is approximately 814 acres for 25 million people. We have twice that much acreage for 25,000 people, and I'm very proud of that. Now, as part of the presentation I'm still going to do, I want to go forward and show you some of the pictures of the different parts of the hills, because a lot of people don't have the opportunity to go up and see the land that the city has purchased. And by the way, this land is for everyone. At the end of my presentation this evening, I will be asking a special favor from Jarb Typet, our Public Works Director. But please notice that we have bikers. Later on, you'll notice we have people walking on different trails. Notice, now, most of these pictures are showing green grass. It looks a little drier today. But that's at the top of the hills, looking over the valley. Gorgeous sight. You can even see the snow cap peaks in the background. The little redded areas is probably where kangaroo rats were scurrying across. And while I'm making this presentation, Mr. Ziprick, if you want to help me out...
This is Four Corners, a lot of you have heard of, which is where four major trails
Right here, we come to the highest peak in Loma Linda now. How high is that, Bob?
2166 at the top. It's a peak on the right there. And it's not officially in the city yet, so work has to be done by staff to annex it. But now that we own it, I think that's supposed to proceed very quickly.
Another nice view of the hills, with the mountains, snow cap peaks in the background. Runners, I hate it when these runners come past me and I'm jogging. I'm sorry, I'm not jogging, I'm walking and trying to catch my breath, and they go by and they're talking to each other as they walk past, and I can barely breathe. Isn't that pretty? This is at the beginning of the climb for what's called the Jedi, which is very close to the Riverside County line. And this is where, they call it the Jedi because it is so steep, as I understand it...
And narrow.
And I will vouch for that.
Have you gotten to the top?
I have!
This is the top of the Jedi, so you're now there. There's a sign there, that little sign...
Right there.
Tells people to keep out. That's when it was owned by someone who wasn't as friendly and used to shoot over people's heads. Has the name Shotgun Ridge. The sign is still there, yes.
Floyd, I might mention, the last time that Bob and I climbed up there was probably about six months ago, and I think I offered him somewhere near $10,000 for just one drink of water.[527.19][527.19](Laughter) Because we do not have water fountains up there. More views of the hills. Look at the flowers there. I especially wanted this one in there, because we do have, in parts of the hills, a lot of different kinds of flowers, and certainly a lot of different birds. Bob, is this the beginning of the Jedi?
I think this is, close to it, yes. That's more definitely what it looks like. That's near the top of the Jedi, if you're right at the top, just for that sign, as you're looking up. In fact, we're in Riverside County right now, looking southeast.
More of the flowers that we have in the hills. Who knows, that might be you, Jim Minow.
There's a couple of people on the very top of that ridge. This is the bottom of the Jedi, what it looks like, when you're looking from San Bernardino County into Riverside County. Riverside County is, we're basically at the border of the two counties, but Loma Linda owns on both sides, so we're looking almost directly south.
Isn't that a gorgeous view? More of the flowers in the hills?
Part of the goal is to work with local groups, citizen groups, Trail Committee, Chamber Commerce, the Parks and Historical Society, and try to create more guides and things like this. But what you have tonight is just a little map that the city has created as a souvenir, so people know what it is we have. But it's obviously not massively descriptive, but it gives you some idea of what you have up there.
Did everybody get a copy of this map? If not, we have some at the back.
That is the old border, where those people are approaching. The city land was on this side, and that fence was the border of what we just bought. That's where in Scott Canyon here.
Past that fence is what we just closed on last Thursday morning. Now, the City Council took an action last council meeting to put all of this land in a conservancy, assuming that the voters approve of that on November 4. So, and I hope that happens. When that does happen, these hills will be protected, and it's one of the primary assets that the city of Loma Linda will have. Now, Jarb, there at Holder Crooks Park, as you start to get close to the trail system, there's some very ugly signs that say, "No trespassing." And as one of my last acts as mayor, I'm going to ask you to take those signs down, put up a welcome sign, and say it is open to the public. Some people have asked, "When will that happen? When will it be open to the public?" So go and enjoy it, because the city now owns it. And I am very, very proud of that.
I should just want to comment, Bob. There's, interesting, it did, well, I've been on council 18 years, and the hills has been a big discussion for all of those 18 years, but that was a short enough time that there's three of us sitting up here who participated in every single one of those purchases, which is interesting, I think.
Stan, you were in on all of it, weren't you?
Yeah. I think those of us who have watched you folks work at it, some of us have gotten help a little bit, but I really appreciate, and realize it's been a combined effort of you folks, and frankly, a lot of citizens who've also been very, very supportive, the Trails Committee and our mountain biking groups, you start going down the list, and I want to thank all of you who have supported this, because it's been a long effort, and very few cities have been able to accomplish anything like this. We're very much a standout in this area, so thanks go to all of those involved for doing this.
Did you want to make the comment? I saw a hand there. Oh, I wasn't sure. I saw a hand, I wasn't... Okay. Okay. Any questions? Oh, yes, Jim.
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank not only you, Mayor Christman, but the rest of the council, and some of the members that even are on the council now, that have worked hard right alongside of you for 15 years that I know of, through a couple of initiatives, many, many, many hours. This looks so simple, it looks like, oh, just a stroke of a pen, nothing to it. I think that, as I said at the last meeting, I think that future generations will thank all of you for the vision and the foresight that you've had in providing for this open space, and a real treasure, it's like a jewel in the city of Loma Linda, nobody else around here will have it. And I think that it's hard to really express the gratitude of the community until they've gotten out and seen what's there and enjoyed it. And when the years roll by, they look back and say, "You know, those folks really, really, really battled on our behalf many years, and we are the beneficiaries of that." So, on behalf of the Trails Committee, and the other committees that have, the Parks Committee that have worked hard, the Subcommittee of the Trails Committee for years and years, I just want to express our gratitude to all of you and to the community for giving us the opportunity to work together and really accomplish this. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Grant, by your coming forward, my middle son and his friend have just walked in. There's room up here. Do you want to come sit down?
Well, right now, I'm in an emotional state because of the illness of my daughter. But I want to thank you for the park in Bryn Mawr. I've been up there, I've lived here in the area for 16, 19 years, and Dick Wiley took me up there one day with the fire chief. And I really noticed the beauty that we have down here in the city. So, I want to thank the committee and all of you that were involved for the purchase of this thing. Thank you.
Welcome, Dick. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. A challenge came down from the bench up here to come up with ideas on the Trail Committee. We got fortunate enough to be on the designing of this, putting ideas together, and the challenges that went with it. I've been back there several times, and many times have gained experiences from it. Two of them that stick out in my mind were, one day was at my mom's house, and she yelled at us, "You got a rattlesnake down here!" Well, I went down real quick to see what was going on. Well, it had got stuck in the chicken wire fence, and it was out in the sun, for how long, I don't know. But I said, "Let me go get the snake sticks," because we lived above Holder Crooks Park, so we had those quite frequently. And when I got back down there, I decided I'm going to put a noose around its head, so if it strikes, I've got a hold of it. And I started to work it back with the other stick. This did not coil, it did not move, it was alive, and there was some inclination in there that said, "Somebody's going to help." Got it back out, picked it up, repositioned the head, and put it in a pail. By that time, my brother got down, mom says, "You ought to get a sound of the rattler on it." So she stirs this up, and it got feisty. But I have been back there and seen other rattlers, and I will sit and watch them. They will not come after you, they want to get away from you. So it takes a little education. The other one was going up one of those canyons, I happened to look over, and here's a mule deer. Some of you have seen the deer back there. And here was the mother and its little fawn. It looked at me, and I looked at it, I figured it would take off. And I looked at it, it looked at me. I said, "Okay." I shut the engine off on the ATC, and I sat there. And it went back to eating. It got its fill and took off on the hills. This is things that people may not be aware of that are back there. Sometimes we go too fast to observe small things, and we have to stop, and this is one of the things that, after being back there and working on this committee, this section that you just purchased was the number-one suggestion by the whole committee to come back and say, "This is our number-one suggestion to you to get." And thanks to you for pulling this together and having this, and I hope in the future we will have areas for all kinds of education and fun back there for people to learn.
Thank you.
So thank you for that and everything else you've done.
I'm Jonathan Beatty, and speaking on behalf of the Redlands Conservancy and the Bicycle Commuter Coalition of the Inland Empire. Shirley Leonard, the Executive Director of the Redlands Conservancy, would like to thank all of you for your leadership and exemplary leadership on open space conservancies and recognizing the value of trails with such incredible vistas and natural resources accessible to all, as you say. So I wanted to relay those thanks and congratulations. And on behalf of the Bicycle Commuter Coalition of the Inland Empire and the mountain biking community, it's absolutely fantastic to have such a tremendous network of cycling trails that we can actually ride to. We can leave the cars in the parking lot or garage and head out, and they're locally accessible, and it's just fantastic to have a resource like this. Thank you so much, and we look forward to helping in any way we can.
Thank you for your comments.
Congratulations to you all. My name is Matthew Baker, and I will represent another group of people that enjoy the hills, and that is the bird watchers, who come out and enjoy the chaparral species of Southern California that make this area so unique. And I just want to thank you all, and again, reiterate the leadership and the vision that you have shown by acquiring this land and demonstrating to communities throughout the area that this is the way we should be progressing. And it's so exciting to see people in this room, as well as the excitement on all of your faces in what you have done. So again, congratulations and thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go forward with the agenda. We probably don't need to do this, but it's our standard procedure. Any comments on any items not on the agenda? Pretty much done that, I think. Conflict of interests. Now we will go to item one on the agenda, Council Bill R. 2008-40, confirming the June 3, 2008 election results. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, accept the election results.
Second? There's a second? Any further discussion? Any opposition? So ordered. Item 2008-41, I better turn that one over to you, Stan.
Yeah, it would be my privilege to do that, Mr. Mayor. And this is Council Bill R. 2008-41, and I would like to entertain a motion to approve this.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's just all show our unanimous support, which I'm sure there will be, by voting aye.
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 Thank you.
And I would like to take this time to read that resolution to Mayor Christman. Sometimes get a little irritated when I have these long resolutions and wonder, you know, why can't we just skip through a few words? But I think it's very important that we do read this one, and I'm going to beg indulgence that I am going to read most all of this. I think it's only appropriate. And it's a resolution of the City Council, of the city of Loma Linda, commending Councilman Mayor Robert H. Christman for his devotion to civic duty and outstanding service to the city. And especially your favorite part, the whereas is here. Whereas Robert H. Christman began serving as a member of the City Council in April 1988. Hard to believe, isn't it? Serving six years as mayor, two years as mayor pro tem, and four years as vice chairman of the redevelopment agency. And whereas, prior to serving as a council member, Robert H. Christman served as a member of the Budget Committee for six years, four years of chairman. And whereas, Robert H. Christman, in his capacity as a member of the City Council, represented the city in numerous civic and governmental agencies and boards, amongst which are the Inland Valley Development Agency, the San Bernardino International Airport Authority, San Bernardino Associated Governments, Omnitrans, East Valley Airport Land Use Commission, Solid Waste Management Board, Southern California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, Redlands Unified School District/Loma Linda JPA, or Joint Powers Act, and the I-10 Freeway Corridor and Beautification Committee.
I didn't know I did that much. I'm going to have a lot of extra time now.
There's a lot of significant accomplishments that you can be very proud of with all those different representations that you've done over the years for this city. Whereas, in 1995, Robert H. Christman initiated the purchase of 790 acres within the South Hills areas, followed by the purchase of 60 acres adjacent to Holder Crooks Park the same year, and led the acquisition of 238 acres in Riverside County in 2006, and the recent acquisition of 587 acres for a total approximately 1,675 acres for open space and recreational purposes. And whereas, he served the city in a fair, honest, and open manner, always voting his conscience as to what he believed best for the citizens of Loma Linda, which has not only, which has been not only to his credit, but to the benefit of the city of Loma Linda. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Loma Linda does hereby applaud, honor, and recognize Robert H. Christman for outstanding and dedicated service to the community and city, and extends best wishes for health and happiness as he leaves a dedicated career as a member of the City Council. And be it further resolved that the mayor, pro tem, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute this resolution on behalf of the City Council, that it be spread in full upon the minutes of this meeting, that a certificate bearing this resolution and the seal of the city be presented to Robert H. Christman, passed and approved, adopted this 8th day of July 2008. It is my privilege to present this resolution and proclamation to Mayor Christman. I believe the Chamber of Commerce has a presentation that they would like to present at this time.
We represent the Chamber of Commerce. This evening, we have a plaque we would like to award. On behalf of the Chamber, presented to Mayor Robert Christman with deep appreciation for your many years of selfless dedication and outstanding service to the business community and the Chamber, the Loma Linda Chamber of Commerce. July 8, 2008. Thank you very much.
I would like to also read a proclamation on behalf of the Mayor of Redlands, John Harrison, that has been sent from our neighboring city. Dear Mayor Christman, on behalf of the city of Redlands, I would like to congratulate you on your many years of service to the city of Loma Linda and the communities of the East Valley. Your tireless efforts for open space and trails, adequate transportation systems, and solid economic growth for your city and its surrounding communities has made a permanent positive impact on our area and its residents. It has always been a great pleasure for me to meet with you, to discuss and develop common approaches to issues and opportunities facing our two cities. I look forward to working with you on future efforts. I look forward to working with you on future efforts for the betterment of the East Valley in the years to come. All the best, John Harrison, Mayor of Redlands.[608.01][608.01](applause) And I would like to take this opportunity to just let individual council members make a few comments at this time with this occasion tonight, and be glad to have anyone lead off that would like to.
Okay, I'll start. Bob, it's been a great pleasure working with you on a lot of these projects. The Hills has been the last one, and one of the things I want to mention, Bob has been very much the infrastructure person in the council. We've all been interested in it. We're all very concerned about infrastructure and things like that, but one thing about Bob, he's very interested in a large variety of issues, and some of the things I know he's been working on along with this, we've talked about solar and transportation, and obviously, he's got a big interest in things like the airport. So, whatever you're going to do in the future, Bob, I know you're going to be active and dynamic and stay involved in this community and the whole region, so I suspect all of our paths are going to cross again and again. So, look forward to -- and also, we do hike quite a bit, so I look forward to continuing to hike in this new South Hills Reserve, which is now legal.
Thank you.
In the fall of 1989, after having lived in Loma Linda for three years, I guess, I went out one morning at 5:30 in the morning and picked up the newspaper and came back in and sat down on the bed by my wife and started to read it, and I said, you know, there's going to be an election in Loma Linda, maybe I should run for something. I did, and before I did, though, however, the very first person that I went to see and talk to, I didn't know anybody on council. I didn't know anybody. The first person I went to talk to was Bob Christman. I went to his office and knocked on his door and asked him a few questions about City Council, and it wasn't long in his rather blunt ways, I said, are you thinking about running for City Council? And I said, well, the thought had crossed my mind. He said, how much money are you willing to spend? It was his first question. So, he's been there longer than I have, and we've -- all my time in City Council, he's been there. I'm going to miss you, Bob.
Thank you.
We've spent a lot of time talking over issues, and I guess two of the really big projects that I think about, that we've worked on during this time together, is the South Hills, which has been there ever since we've been on council. It's been there. That's been a huge issue. It's never gone away. It's always been an issue. But the other big one was the San Tim Creek. And I can't even imagine the amount of energy that we all put into that project and trying to solve that issue of the San Tim Creek, including trips to Washington and visiting with senators and congressmen and twisting people's arms and enduring a lot of flak. And the fact that that San Tim Creek project is done and over with, and that I consider to be one of the really major accomplishments that's happened in the last years that we've been on council together. I would very much appreciate knowing you, associating with you. Besides being fellow council members, we're also good friends, and I'll miss you and wish you well. I'm certain that I will be seeking advice, as I did right at the beginning.
I might mention that on one of our trips to Washington, D.C., to work on the San Tim Creek project, we were in the basement of Grand Central Station or Union Station. You remember that, Floyd?
Yep.
When we were trying to work out the details for the Stater Brothers, moving it from where the Clark's Nutrition Center is now to the new location. And I don't remember all of the issues, except that there was a problem with the roof, and Stater Brothers was $20,000 apart with somebody on something. And we didn't have cell phones as readily available back then, so we had two telephone -- we were at two different telephone booths, and I was running from one to the other, and I finally said, here's what the city will do, and I didn't really think I had the authority to do it, but Floyd didn't tell me to stop. And we got that deal put together in the basement of Union Station there in Washington, D.C., to move the Stater Brothers. And I guess that's one experience, Floyd, that I'll remember.
There was one other on that same trip, and we were about to get on the Underground Railway that the congressmen and senators used to get from place to place.
Oh, yes. I wasn't going to mention that, but go ahead.
And Bob was walking ahead of me, and there was guards there. I guess only certain people can ride on that railway. And Bob walked right through, and the guy motioned him right through, and then I was kind of behind, and he looked at me and wasn't going to let me through, and he says, oh, are you with the congressman?[974.13][974.13](laughter) I said, yep. Okay, he said, go ahead.[980.31][980.31](laughter)
Well, actually, he said, are you with that congressman over there? And I said, yeah, he's with me, let him go.[988.13][988.13](laughter) And the guy let him go, just like that. I didn't know I had enough authority to tell one of those guards over there what to do, but that was fun.
Well, Bob, I've been here for only two years. When I first came on the council, you were very much the gentleman, like a cuddly uncle that took me under your wing and helped me get accustomed to some of the issues on the City Council, and I really appreciate that. You've always been a consummate gentleman. I appreciate that. You deserve great credit for what you did, acquiring the land in the Hills, and that can never be taken away from you. We didn't always agree on things, but like I said, when we didn't agree, you always treated me with respect, and I really appreciate that. And to the extent that I wasn't perceived as reciprocating, I apologize, and I really appreciate what you've done for the city. You've had 20 years of tremendous accomplishments, and maybe someday we'll achieve our joint goal of eliminating the red light cameras, but when that time comes, we can have a big celebration. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I would just like to add a few personal remarks. I think we've heard of all the accomplishments that Mayor Christman has contributed to, and I'd just like to add a few personal comments. One thing that, over time, you end up almost feeling a little bit like family. When we have occasions like this and look back and reflect, it really is hard to believe how many hours and days we've spent together in this meeting hall on various issues behind these doors and other venues. And I've always appreciated Bob's great sense of humor when things may not be going real well. Bob's always got a good joke and a good quip to help things along, and that's a quality that is much appreciated, as well as the other accomplishments we've heard. We've also always had fun kind of rubbing each other which one of us is more right-wing on certain budget and other issues, and I think it depends on which issue it is, but we each can claim title to that distinction from time to time. So, again, salute your accomplishments and will miss working with you directly on council, but look forward to working with you in other capacities.
Thank you.
At this time, I would also like to present to Mayor Christman a recognition for all his years of service with a small token of appreciation from the city. And it's one of these lamps that only come out on very special occasion and don't see these very often, and they really are, you know, a great keepsake, and the woodwork is beautiful. It's got the seal of the City of Loma Linda, and it's got Robert H. Christman, City Council 1988 to 2008, Mayor 1992 to 1996, and 2006 to 2008. So, I know you can put this to use in your office, and just noticing we don't have a light bulb for it, but we can figure that out, I'm sure.[1232.13][1232.13](laughter) (applause)
At least it wasn't a rocking chair.[1244.63][1244.63](laughter) Does it time stand for me to make a few comments?
It absolutely is, unless there's anyone else from the audience that didn't feel they had their opportunity earlier. I would like to at least give anyone else a chance if they felt they didn't have that
Mayor, City Council. It was about 20 years ago that my dad and my brother and I walked into your office when you were at an office in San Bernardino someplace, and just asking for some general business advice. I think at the time, my dad had just become the first chairman of the Planning Commission. And he said he became -- he was requested to become the Planning Commission Chairman, and he said, I'll do it if I can eliminate the Planning Commission. That was what he wanted to do. But in the ensuing years, I've had the pleasure of getting to know you, Bob, and working with you on their various projects, and sometimes seeking advice about things and how things run and what goes on, and I appreciate that. And I'll always cherish our friendship. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And by the way, increasing the open space in Loma Linda by almost 40% after you've lost an election is an accomplishment that I don't think anybody can get atop that.
I'd like to make a few comments on behalf of Loma Linda University Adventist Health Science and Center. You've been a real support to the various Loma Linda University entities over the years, and we appreciate all you've done. We especially appreciate the Hills, the 1,600 acres of Hills. Our over 4,000 students and many of our 13,000 employees will greatly benefit and enjoy the time that they can spend in the Hills. And again, thank you and congratulations.
Anyone else wishing to give any further comments? If not, Mayor Christman.
Please let me accomplish the three minutes.[1451.13][1451.13](laughter)
I think I can do it in three minutes. No, it's been a nice experience. I have enjoyed my service to the city. My first campaign, one of the comments that I made was, I hope I can make a contribution. And I think I've done that. For most of the time that I've been on the council, there's been a spirit of camaraderie. We've worked together and had a very good working relationship. Haven't always agreed, but we were able to always be friends. I'm very proud of the fact that over the last 15 years, the city of Loma Linda has had a balanced budget. And just for the record, there's a lot of cities in the Inland Empire that don't have those writing rights. As a matter of fact, you pick up almost any newspaper today, and there's an issue of some city in the Inland Empire having a budget crisis. I'm not saying that we haven't had things to look at and things to worry about, but for 15 years, consecutive 15 years, we have had a balanced budget. And one of my goals when I first became mayor was that I would not turn over the job to this next mayor, but the city in a worse financial position than when I accepted the And Stan, you were right there with me. There were a few times when I thought Stan was a little too conservative. There were a few times when he shocked me. And he is right. We did rave each other somewhat on that. This budget this year, I hope it comes out okay. I was gone to Texas when it was passed, and I hope the current recession makes it possible that this year's budget is balanced also. If it's not, I'll be back here talking to you from there. I'm very proud of the Conservancy. This was a major issue for me. There were comments that I hadn't done enough to purchase land in the Hills or set or put together a Conservancy. I hope those comments have been proven wrong. This has been a difficult campaign for the city, and I hope the city never goes through a campaign like this again. The city will do well. The city's in good financial position. The city looks nice. The beautification efforts that we have undertaken, I think, makes the city what I like to call one of the jewels of the Inland Empire. The parks we've put together, we have expanded significantly, the Holda Crooks Park. We, during the last, I think, 10 to 12 years, put together the Leonard Bailey Park. Then we have the park where Little League has gone. And I just love going across the Mountain View Bridge on Sunday mornings especially and seeing all those little kids out there, three or 400 of them, and three or four different ball fields. I think it's three that we have there, and I'm very proud of that because it's an amenity that benefits not just the adults in the community, but the children in the community. And then, of course, as Fred Ramos mentioned, the new and latest park, the Brenmore Veterans' Memorial Park.[1708.13][1708.13](applause) So, those are things that I'm very proud of. We are widening, as most of you have seen, the Mountain View Bridge. Construction has started. That's been a long, difficult process. Then the Anderson Tippy Canoe Project. That one probably is the most difficult one yet, and that one is scheduled to open 2012. If it doesn't get opened and get finished by 2012, I'm going to come and ask some of you why it didn't happen, because that one is on schedule and going to happen. I checked with Sandbag last week, and that's always a difficult project, primarily because of the federal government's involvement, because it's a federal highway. I want to turn to the staff, and our city manager is not here tonight, but I am very, very proud of the city staff, and that means every single one of you. And I'm going to mention by name all of you that are here. And our city manager, as I mentioned, is gone. He has a new granddaughter that he thought was more important to see her than to stay for this meeting tonight. Rich Alderway, as I said-- Rich Halliday is our city attorney and has done a fantastic job for us. And Rich Halliday, I think, has been on the, has either city attorney or associate city attorney for all the time I've been on the council. Gene Dimczuk was our primary person at first. Deb Walgriff has done a tremendous amount of work. Thank you, Deborah. Comrade, Information Systems Department, has taken over a lot of the internet, our computer systems, the solar systems, that entire area. And we, by the way, as a city, are leaders on internet capabilities, hooking up to new houses, the top of our city hall with its solar systems, our parking lots, our parking stalls with solar on the top of them that powers a lot of city hall. And we have been leaders in the greening or the green efforts in the inland empire. And Pam O'Cam. Pam, we have sometimes called her Mother Superior. She has been here the entire twenty years. When I first joined the council, somebody asked me, "Who really ran the city?" And I says, "Well, I presume it's the city council." Then somebody says, "No, maybe it's the mayor." Somebody else says, "Maybe it's the university, Bob Frost." And then I found out that it's really Pam O'Cam because she knows everything. And there isn't anything that happens in this city that she doesn't have a background on it. So Pam, for those of the council that don't know that you really secretly run city hall, I'll be happy to tell them. Now, our new fire chief is not here, but Roland Crawford has been our fire chief in the past. And Roland, it's been a pleasure working with you over the years. I think a couple of times over the years, you've even shown up at my house during what shouldn't have been a fire call but was. I remember when I was on the Budget Committee and I made the comment that we couldn't afford to send the fire department to every little call. And that very day, the fire department was at my house and Roland was there. And you probably remember that. Jarb, you've done a great job for the city. A lot of the special projects we've worked on wouldn't have been possible without your efforts and I thank you. Dave Williams is new. He has been our lieutenant for Loma Linda for only three months. We did ask him to bring doughnuts because that's what cops do. And he brought doughnuts his second meeting. He didn't bring them the first meeting because he didn't know that was a history. Diana, Deanda, our finance director. There's one thing you don't see from Loma Linda and that is any financial scandals in the newspapers. We have never had that. We run a tight ship. Our finances are done well. We're proud of them and we're proud of the staff there. I'm sure I've missed some of you, but I'm only dealing with the people that are right here. But we have had good employees and the departments, all of you represent good departments. I read not too long ago that an organization runs well when it trusts its staff. And I certainly have felt like I could trust the staff and thank you all. In my closing comments, I want to thank my family. My son, Steven, is here. My eldest son, Carl, is here. And my wife, Gay, is here. And especially Gay has put up with a lot of my late nights. And some of my frustrations when I come home frustrated, probably after talking to you, Stan, about the budget. And thank you for your efforts. Admiral Hyman Rickover always told people that work for him, the father of a submarine program, "Whatever you do, always do your best." And I feel I can leave the city and I can tell the city I did my best. And I thank you.
I think that would be in order, so let's look at resuming five or ten after eight. Let's make it ten after eight.
I'd like to reconvene the City Council. Soon as we have everyone here, we will get started again. I can promise you, I think safely, the next part of the meeting will be shorter than the last part. I'll make my promise for very short speech and remarks when we get to that section. Anyone see Councilman Riggsby out there? We'll give him the holler. We'll get started here. The next part of the meeting will be with the oath of allegiance to the City Councilman-elect. And as soon as everyone is in place, we will let Pam O'Cam lead us through the next part of this process. All right, looks like we're all assembled and in order, and I will officially reconvene this City Council meeting and turn it over to Madam Clerk.
Yes, and if I could have Dr. Brower and Dr. Riggsby and Mr. Popescu join me down at the podium. I'm not going to ask you to repeat after me, but if this is like a wedding, so if you say I will or I do, it would be great. Raise your right hands, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will defend, that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? I do. And if you each would sign your oath? I have signed the certificate of election, and I will read one of them. It's I, Pamela Burns O'Cam, City Clerk of the City of Loma Linda, State of California, to hereby certify that at a general municipal election held in said city on the third day of June 2008, Stan Brower, Audrey Popescu, and Rhodes Riggsby were elected to the office of Member of the City Council as a peer as by the official returns of said election and the statement of votes cast now on file in my office, and I have signed it. And I have one more comment. Since you are the newest member, I will give you a city pin. Wear it with pride. This is your first official agenda packet for this evening's meeting. And your copy of the municipal code. Congratulations, gentlemen. This would be the time for any remarks, if you'd like to make any.
Councilman Popescu?
I guess now it's on, okay. Well, I want to go ahead and follow Mr. Brower's recommendation of keeping it short, so I plan on making my statements brief. I thank you for giving me this opportunity to serve on the City Council. I am honored and privileged to be able to represent all of you and look forward to working with all the council members on the left and the right, although when I perhaps change positions, everybody may be on my left. I've been, I'm very excited about pursuing a different direction for our city. I believe that the citizens have clearly spoken, and they would like us to do a good job in representing their interests, and I hope to follow through on those wishes. Having gotten here hasn't been an easy road, and there's many people to thank for giving me this opportunity. First and foremost, I couldn't have done it without the support and love of my wife and the patience of my children, who have skipped many of late-night stories and cuddles as a result of me having to be here. I'm hoping that in the future, as the council meetings move on, we won't last as long, so I won't have to skip as many. Obviously, there's other individuals who are very much a part of me being here, and I think that it's very important for me to acknowledge them. First and foremost, Dr. Georgia Hotchkin and Dr. Wayne Isaf, who is not here, and Valerie and Jay Galant and Kathy Glennridge are all individuals who I believe are truly leaders in our community and have been instrumental in explaining to the citizens about the direction which we're going. And I just happen to be there to be willing to help represent that sentiment. Those individuals worked tirelessly on the citizens' behalf, and they continue to do so, pouring money and energy out of their own pockets to this very day, and they'll probably continue to do so unfortunately. I also want to thank all those volunteers and individuals who are very much involved, especially my parents, my mom and dad. They were extremely supportive and very helpful, my brother who spent a great deal of time putting up signs and knocking on many doors. And there are a lot of other individuals who are very much involved. There's probably forty to fifty individuals, and I can't name them all, who spend a great deal of time and energy talking to individuals. Pam Ashburn is in the audience now. She's one of those individuals. I want to thank her. I don't think I could have been here without their support and the time and energy that they spent. So it isn't about me being elected, but it's about the citizens expressing a view and making sure that we follow through with that. And I encourage all of you to continue to come and attend City Council. I believe that it is important for everybody to become involved. It is important to come and let us know how we're doing, make sure we're doing a good job, and let us know how we can serve you better. And I now look forward to learning about city government and being on the other side of the aisle, and I thank you again.
It has definitely been my privilege to serve on City Council now for going on sixteen years. I guess the easiest way I use is my benchmark is I first came on council when Bill Clinton was elected for the first time in 1992, so it makes it an easy timeframe to latch on to. I can remember the first year on council, some of the severe budgetary challenges, as we had a major recession in that period, and some of my colleagues chided me that potholes had never been worse in Loma Linda than the first year I was on council. Due to the hard work of many in the city, I hope we can avert a repeat of that, but we definitely have some financial challenges ahead. Promise to keep this short, and I intend to be true to that promise. I also would like to thank several people, obviously first and foremost, my family. Appreciate all the patience and forbearance that my wife Carol gives me for being absent and sometimes coming home in a bad mood after a meeting and so forth. But she's willing to put up with me. Appreciate my son, sitting on the front row, Max, and his indulgence, my daughter Laura, who is not able to be here tonight. And my mother, who's always supportive even when I make bad speeches and different things like that. Also want to thank those that have supported me. A lot of individuals have worked very hard, tireless efforts over the years. And in the most recent election campaign, I am humbled by your support, and I will endeavor to do my very best to represent what I think are viewpoints of the community and what is best for the community. I also pledge to do my very best to give a fair shake to some that may have actually been opponents during the campaign, may have different issues that we may not always see eye to eye. But I will do my level best to give every viewpoint a fair shake and make the best decision I can. I look forward to working with the current council and staff. I have great faith in all of them and know that we will do a great job collectively, not as individuals. But look forward to moving forward. I think we've had some difficult challenges, as we've heard, related to the hills, related to some development issues, but I see us moving forward, making this, and continuing to foster having the City of Loma Linda a great place to live and a place that we can really be proud of, the institutions and the medical work that goes on here as we endeavor to make man whole. So again, I thank you for your support, and I look forward to serving another term.
Well, my wife Beverly deserves loads of credit for her long-suffering, single-parent status during the evenings and weekends consumed by politics in the past two years and into the unforeseeable future. I love her very much. I thank God for her every day. My daughters, they're in the second row, Julia, Sophie, and Annalise. They deserve more of Daddy's time than politics allows. But I thank them for loving me anyway and for missing tonight's tennis lesson to help celebrate with me. I must thank my campaign supporters, who are legion, those who gave of their time, their energy, their shoe leather, their money, and their best wishes. They've all invested their hopes and dreams, and I will endeavor not to disappoint that investment. When I embarked upon my first term here on the City Council two years ago, I proclaimed that my goal was to disappoint slightly less than half of the citizens at any given time. I didn't always achieve that low standard, but my goal has not changed. I'm honored and I'm humbled by the trust placed in me by the citizens of this great city. I look to Loma Linda's future with great optimism. And with the support of our citizens and the help of our dedicated city staff, we can achieve great things. Thank you.
At this time, we will go on with the agenda for the election of mayor. And we will, there is a script of some, of a sort before you, so that you can follow it. We will open nominations, and if there is a vote, I do need a vote by voice, and I would like a raise of hands as well.
Madam Clerk, I nominate Stan Brower as mayor and move that nominations close.
Madam Clerk, I second the nomination.
Madam Clerk, I move that we close the nomination.
And there has been a motion in a second for Stan Brower as mayor, and that nominations be closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that would be a unanimous vote for Stan Brower as mayor. Congratulations.
I think I abstain from that, but I guess procedurally we can make that a correct statement, that it was by acclamation. It is a great privilege and is humbling to be elected as mayor, and I will give it my absolute best effort as mayor and thank my fellow council members for their confidence. I would like to now open the floor for nominations for election of Mayor Pro Tem.
I would like to nominate Mr. Riggsby as Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second the nomination.
Any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem? If not, I would like to follow the same procedure that we followed and ask that if someone so wishes to close the nomination and cast unanimous ballot.
I move that we close the nomination.
I will second that. And all those in favor of that action, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. Now the really fun part, all these wonderful boards and commissions that, you know, some of them really are very interesting, and they are very valuable, there's no question, but a few of them, some of us that have served for years on, are a little more obscure, but we'll have some some of the interesting ones and some of the more obscure ones. The first one on our list is for Representative to Sandbag or the San Bernardino Associated Governments. And so I'd like to open the floor for nominations for our Sandbag representative.
Before we go on, are we not going to be talking about the RDA Board Chair and RDA Board Vice Chairman?
We could talk about that, but I think we'll finish these board commission appointments and then move to that, if that's acceptable to the council.
Do you want to handle these formally, or should we just do a?
In tradition, in the past, we have ended up, if we can come to consensus without a full vote, if the council is amenable to that, I think that makes good sense to me. Is there any opposition to going by consensus for the following appointments?
I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, I've been on, I'm the trans, I think I'm the longest-serving member on that board by a fair amount. I'm chairman of the Administrative and Finance Committee. We're just in the middle of a of an internal audit program that we're instituting there in the U B X system. And I've also served for a number of years on the IVDA. I'd be happy to just stay on those two. If it's okay with everybody else remaining where I am, I'd be perfectly happy with it.
No objection.
I think the service that you've provided and the leadership and continuity in those positions are very important, and I certainly would support it. Any, any other comments on having council? Any, any other comments on having Councilman Peterson on Omni-Trans and IVDA? Seeing none, that is agreed by consensus. Sandbag position?
I would like to nominate Dr. Rigsby to be on that board. I believe that one of the reasons we fought so greatly during the campaign was to try to work closely with our local, local governments in fixing some of the traffic issues, and I believe that he would be a very good individual to represent the city.
Consensus by City Council, looks like we have a consensus, that Mayor Pro Tem Rigsby will be our representative for Sandbag. The next item we have listed is San Bernardino...
By the way, on those, all these boards require alternates as well.
I was going to come back and do the alternates after the regular, but we could go either way, but if that's acceptable, what plan. San Bernardino International Airport Authority.
I'd love Ziprick for that position.
I'm certainly willing to serve on that if that's the pleasure of the council.
Looks like we have a consensus on that, and appreciate you being willing to serve on that. The next position is the Solid Waste Board. This is one of these that, you know, may not be as exciting as some of the others, but it's important nonetheless.
I believe the IVDA has two members represented, so we need to, and I wouldn't mind serving with Mr. Ziprick on the, with Mr. Peterson on the IVDA.
Yeah, did we skip over IVDA?
Yeah, we did.
We actually had Mr. Peterson for one of those slots, and as I understand it, there's a second representative that we're now speaking of.
I support that.
Consensus for Councilmember Papescu being the second full-time representative to IVDA. Solid Waste Management Board.
That, I don't know, who's the, who's the, who's the current member in there? Do you remember who he is?
Yes, Councilmember Rigsby and Councilman Brower.
Because that one, that meets about, and I think twice a year now or something, doesn't it?
Yeah, it doesn't meet very often.
I was a, I was a charter member on that, by the way, when that was first, first form. I served in that for many years, but that one only meets once a quarter, once, twice a year, something like that.
We started a tradition when I came on two years ago, that since solid waste flows downhill, it would go to the junior member.
Or maybe it's more...
I don't know if we want to continue that.
Might be more appropriate for the new mayor to have to be there based on other considerations. I, in all seriousness, am willing to, to be a representative on that, or if Councilman Papescu, based on Councilman Rigsby's suggestion.
I, I guess I'll follow that suggestion and sit on that board.
All right, consensus for representation, all right. San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Commission on Water Policy, this is one of those boards that I've sat on off and on over the years. It actually is quite interesting how much actual constructive influence of various city council representatives that go to this have, I think sometimes is, is debatable, but it's certainly something that we need representation on. Do we have any volunteers for that position?
I would like to volunteer for sitting on that commission.
Consensus for Councilman Papescu on the Muni Board, all right. The California Joint Powers Insurance, I have been the representative on this for a number of years, and I'm very willing to continue on that if, if it's agreeable to the rest of the council. Okay. Board of Directors, CONFIRE.
I've served on that board for two years, and I'd be glad to continue if that's the pleasure of the council.
It looks like we have a consensus, just for the audience and so forth, again, I always hate some of these acronyms, it may not make sense, but again, the CONFIRE is a joint regional authority that is charged with coordination of some of the emergency services and other things, preserves public safety with a very vital function throughout this whole east valley, so very important activity. Zone Three Flood Control Representation.
Madam Clerk, does that one require the mayor to be the...
That one requires the mayor be the delegate, but an alternate can be appointed.
I will be willing to serve as a delegate and would entertain, and we can make that an introduction, to get the alternates on, I think, all these positions that do require that. Is there someone willing to be an alternate on the flood control? Councilman Peterson.
By the way, Norm Meyer is also a city representative on that.
Good.
He has been for years.
He would continue, he would continue as that, would he not?
Unless there's a reason under the bylaws of that organization that I'm not aware of, that makes sense, I would presume. Working backwards, alternate for Board of Directors, CONFIRE, have we had an alternate for CONFIRE?
We haven't.
Ziprick's Councilman Peterson.
I used to be on the board.
Are you willing to continue as alternate? Okay. San Bernardino Valley Advisory Board, Water Advisory Board, anyone?
I can serve as an alternate on that.
Okay. Councilman Ziprick for alternate. Solid Waste Management, I express my willingness to participate, I'll be willing to be alternate, if that's acceptable.
You're, aren't you a member of that board and an alternate?
The Solid Waste Board, I think, was going to continue with...
That's the one that we were giving to the junior member, and you were going to be the...
I was going to be the alternate on that, or if someone else wants to be...
I thought there were two members on that committee. Am I...
Well, there's a primary and a...
Secondary.
Secondary.
So I'll be willing to be the alternate.
No, the alternate is the secondary.
There's just one, I believe, on the solid waste.
Okay.
So if council's willing, I'll be willing to be the alternate. San Bernardino International Airport Authority, I think it probably makes sense to, again, look at the IVDA and SBIAA together, since they meet back to back. We've designated our representatives with Councilman Ziprick to the airport, Peterson and Papescu to IVDA. It seems like it makes sense that potentially we have...
I'm currently the alternate on the airport, and I'd be happy to do that.
I'm willing to be the alternate on IVDA if it would help, because I'll be at the airport, and if that made sense, we have the same group covering, if that would work.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Well, I don't see a problem with that, unless somebody else want to be alternate?
Well, currently, we've got Mr. Ziprick as the representative to SBIAA, and we need to come up with an alternate.
For the SBIA? And I think Mr. Peterson was going to be the alternate for SBIA.
I think, right, he, right.
I, I am currently, I'll, if somebody else wants to, but I'd be happy to stay there because I come, I come over for the meetings anyways.
And I was offering to be, if you'd like, the alternate on the IVDA, because I'll be at the other meeting, so if there was a vacancy, it's efficient to not have a, and a lot of their agenda items are closely related, so...
It's certainly been the tradition, I think it's logical to have representatives back each other up on that, is there a consensus from the council for those alternate positions as listed? Seen agreement, so listed. Alternate, again, for Omni-Trans and Sandbag, I think probably makes sense, just like we had, I understand those meet back to back, is that correct? So we've already selected Councilmember Peterson and Mayor Pro Tem Rigsby, and if you're willing to serve as alternate on the respective commission, I think that would make sense. Is that acceptable to council?
Makes sense.
Okay, very good. Anything else that we haven't covered on these boards or commissions?
Can we have the clerk read back?
Sure.
It's a little bit confusing.
Are you clear, Pam, or did we confuse the issue good for you?
Well, I think so. For Sandbag, Councilman Rigsby is the delegate, Councilman Peterson is the alternate. Omni-Trans, Councilman Peterson is the delegate, Councilman Rigsby is the alternate. For the IVDA, Councilmen Peterson and Papescu are the delegates, and Councilman Ziprick is the alternate. For the Airport Authority, Councilman Ziprick is the delegate and Councilman Peterson the alternate. Solid Waste Management Board, Councilman Papescu is the delegate and Council, and Councilman Brower is the alternate. The Water District Advisory Commission, Councilman Papescu is the delegate, Councilman Ziprick the alternate. The JPIA, Councilman Brower is the delegate. You didn't assign an alternate, it has been the city manager in the past and/or the treasurer.
That has been our tradition, and does anyone else have a problem with city manager serving as alternate on the JPIA?
Makes sense.
Everybody's happy with that, I think we have a consensus.
The CONFIRE JPA, Councilman Rigsby is the delegate, Councilman Peterson the alternate, and Zone Three Flood Control, Mayor Brower is the delegate, and Councilman Peterson is the alternate. Some of these boards do require conflict of interest, so I will have those documents prepared for you.
The only other question I have, I should remember, but I don't, have we ever had more than one alternate to IVDA? Is that satisfactory? Okay. As long as that's been our tradition and we're comfortable with that, that sounds appropriate. Any other comments or everyone?
If there are any situations where neither of the primary members can be there, then we can designate an alternate, it's happened before.
Would it be acceptable to have that as our standing policy, or do we need a official designation if that occasion should arise?
I believe it's according to their bylaws as to the appointments, and it's two delegates and one alternate.
I believe we have those positions filled, and we will move on to very short consent calendar. I would like to just simply highlight item number six. Again, we've heard about some exciting activities, but, you know, this is, again, one of these things that worked on for a long time and seeing some fruition, that is going to be exciting as some of these San Timoteo Creek habitat restoration works begin, so it's exciting to see that.
It's taken painfully long to get that happen.
Yeah, it's been a...
Can I add, this is just a phase one, phase two is coming, so we need to spend, spend all the money, so this is phase one.
Hope phase two doesn't take as long as phase one. I'd like to ask to entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Let's move in second, and any opposition to approving the consent calendar? Seeing none, we will adjourn the city council meeting to our next meeting, unless the city attorney deems it appropriate to keep it open for the RDA reorganization. What is your recommendations on how to handle that?
Well, I think the RDA agenda is independent, so you may adjourn the city council and proceed with the RDA.
Can I...
The last, before we formally adjourn city council, would like to ask if there's any comments or words from any council members?
I would like to make a comment. Mayor Brower, you've served on this city council for 16 years. I think that's a new record for service before being elevated to mayor, and we're all honored that you've accepted this position, which I know you did not covet. We're very thankful that you were willing to serve in that capacity. And in the interests of servant leadership, I was wondering if we can declare that the mayor can sit at whatever position he likes. I don't think he necessarily wants to be in the middle.
I object to that.
Because you don't want to be in the middle?
No, I prefer to, since we're doing everything by tradition, let's stick with tradition and have the mayor sit in the middle.
I will defer to the council, and I think we can discuss informally before the next meeting, hopefully work out a consensus. Any other comments from council members?
I'd like to relate to this council remark that was made to me by a mayor of another Former Mayor Christman did make a remark in his speech that about the tenor of the, of the current election that has just passed, and hoped that Loma Linda would not see another one with the same tenor. After the election was over, I walked into a meeting where there was probably about six or eight mayors from the valley and other council members, and the first comment that was made to me by a mayor from a local city was that Loma Linda had always been looked at as a model of civility and the way politics ought to happen, and was always honored by that in this valley, and they had now been very disappointed. That, that perception is now gone. I can tell you that I was horribly embarrassed by that comment, which was made in public. I, well, enough said, I think.
Well, my, my comment would be is, we're, we're working together, we're going to do our best to serve the citizens. Obviously, we have, among many things, different points of view, and probably have some occasional opportunity for debate, and so we'll do our best to carry out the public's business and see how we can do it.
My comments that I would like to add to the discussion, you know, there have been, I think, election campaigns in the past that various ones of us have been involved with, that not always, everything comes out the way that we would like, but I think at this point, in the evening and in the election cycle, as we stand, an important thing is to build for the future and to look forward to the goals that we will have as a city and a community. And the tradition that has been established at the city council that I am proud of is, I have yet to see when we've had disagreements in the city council, that we have not been able to discuss those in a calm, rational manner, without any name-calling, and I look forward to continuing that tradition that we have had here in the City of Loma Linda. Any comments from officers or staff? Seeing none, I will adjourn the city council meeting to our next regularly scheduled city council meeting two weeks from today.
Okay, the redevelopment agency will be called into order, we've already done the roll call, any items to be added or deleted? Madam Clerk? Okay. Anybody from the public wishing to make a comment on any item not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, move to conflicts of interest, I assume we have none, and then we go to schedule items, the reorganization. Madam Clerk, turn the meeting over to you.
The selection of the chairman will be done the same as the selection of the mayor, so we will open nominations for chairman of the agency.
Madam Clerk, I would like to nominate Rhodes Rigsby for chairman of the RDA.
Madam Clerk, I second the nomination.
Lee, I have a motion and a second then to close nominations.
Aye.
I will second that we close nominations for Dusty Rigsby.
And then I would cast a unanimous ballot then for Rhodes Rigsby as chairman of the agency. Congratulations. Now you may conduct the selection for vice chairman.
Now, nominations are in order for the vice chair.
Madam Clerk, I, or Mr. Chairman, I guess it would be now, I nominate Ovi Du Papescu for vice chair.
I will second that.
Are there any other nominations?
I...
I... I second that.
Okay. The motion to close nominations has been cast and has been seconded.
I move that we cast unanimous ballot for Councilman Papesku for Vice Chairman.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Then, is there any opposition? Okay, then, congratulations, you're the Vice Chair. Now we find out how it is that you close a meeting. You did it so fast.
I know, but...
You were so fast, I never figured it out.
Sorry. We can talk later.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of...
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
June 24.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Approve. Then we are, any final comments?
Yes, I just want to thank Councilman Ziprick for his years of service for Chairman of the Redevelopment Agency, having served for some of those years as Vice Chairman. I know the amount of work that goes in it, it's a tremendous amount of work and again, I'd like to publicly thank and recognize a council member, former Chairman of RDA, Ziprick's service in that capacity.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to add my congratulations to you for an excellent job on the RDA and I learned a lot under your leadership and appreciate it very much.
Thanks very much. Well, I know, I know you'll also run efficient meetings since we've done that together a number of times.
I'll try. I don't think I can run this agenda so fast.
Yeah, as Mayor, if I could learn how to run the City Council as quick as RDA, we'd be in business.
We'll help you, don't worry about it.
We'll work on it.
Are there any other comments? Okay, then we are adjourned.